It's not bad.
I don't know, but it is. So what's the deal for you exactly?
It's just plastic mesh, like machine netting.
Okay. Just keep everything moving around as much?
That's the theory on it. So if I agree with that, well, eleven D.
All right, we know it's getting started. Okay, we'll go ahead and get going. I'll call this meeting to order. This is the council meeting for Thursday, July 11, 2019 at 7:00 PM. We'll go ahead and edit the agenda slightly. We have Deputy Tindall here from the Lynn County Sheriff's Department. We'll go ahead and recognize him. We've received the service log for the month. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Eric. Deputy Jim Tindall, Lynn County Sheriff's Office for the City of Auburnett. Required hours are forty-three. Through June there, it was seventy-eight point one hours. Seventeen calls for service. Nothing unusual if you're the school resource. I know that's a little bit late, but I think it's follow-ups for some things that happened, if I recall, I'm not certain, but that happened during the school year, so.
Very good, thank you. That's normal, more than almost double our hours as usual. The council has had an opportunity to look at your questions from council on the service Very good. Thank you, sir, for coming in. We appreciate it.
Any other questions or concerns or anything? Okay. Have a good night.
All right, have a safe evening. All right, here in the city of Auburnett, we do do the Pledge of Allegiance. I will go ahead and stand in lieu of the Pledge of Allegiance. We normally face the flag and go from there, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, I'll go ahead and have the clerk call the roll call, please, to establish reform for tonight's business.
Counselor Trump.
Here.
Counselor Trump.
Present.
Counselor Menson.
Present.
Clerk, any adjustments to the council or to the agenda as submitted?
No.
All right, so I'll go ahead and seek approval of the agenda as submitted. Moved by Sarason, seconded by Trump. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the motion carries. We've already conducted our sheriff's report. That will move on to the mayor's report. I do have a couple of things. We've had an opportunity for the folks that are just showing up or for council as well, we had an opportunity to have an update from our committee, both made up of city members, a few council members, and of the fire department members to meet with our fire group. I'll go into further detail on that later as an agenda item, but we are showing that up. We're prepared to move forward with both the site out of our fire location as well as some of our financials and resolution this evening to set up a public meeting, so things are on track with that. I do want to, I know it's been hot, do appreciate you and your crew out there keeping everything up for us. I know we'll have some of those items in that report, too. And then from our previous meeting, we were still, I know we were going to work on a comprehensive look at fleet. Do we have any update on that?
Hmm.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure what we've got on that. Okay, and then we'll go ahead and move on for the council members. I'll go left or right this time. Councilman Menson, anything for your reports?
Uh, great job, I didn't even remember to put on the car show because it was really neat. You showed up, that's a good thing, and good job with the fire department. Really.
We raised over three thousand dollars for the Diamond Club.
Wow.
From that. Yes, that was, we were praying for fifty cars and we got a hundred and thirty-eight. Thank you guys for letting us do it.
Oh, thank you. That's great. Good.
Sorry, I brought my supper, by the way.
Well.
I didn't want it to sit there and get cold, and I'm like, oh my gosh, it came right before I headed over, so the grandbabies are there eating here.
It's never an issue, but normally when people bring food.
I'm cutting it into small pieces so I can carry it around.
I was gonna say, you normally share, so I'll get a bite before it's over. Okay, thank you, Brian. Counselor Sarason.
Um, my only update is there is a Lynn County EMAD meeting next Tuesday at 6:00 PM. If anyone else would be interested in joining, it's out of the Emergency Management Health and Kitchen Kings. I will, I reply to attend, but if anyone else was interested.
Okay, Counselor Trump. All right. One more thing I should mention. I am on call for a public safety issue this evening. I apologize in advance if my phone rings. It's something that I do have to go take care of, if it does, if you would dig over for me that first. I hope it doesn't. I think we solved it right before I got here, but I apologize if that does occur this evening. Okay, then we'll go ahead and move on to citizen comments. There are two types of citizen comments that we do here in the city of Auburnett. One of them is for agenda items and one is for non-agenda items, so at this time, I'll ask if there's anybody that wishes to make any comments on any agenda items that you see on the agenda this evening. If you choose to do so, we ask you to state your name and address, clear it for the record, you have up to five minutes to make any comments that you have on any agenda items, any agenda item comments this evening. Okay, seen none, then we'll go ahead and move on to non-agenda items. Again, you'll have up to five minutes in this. Basically, you can make any comments you want, whether it's on the agenda or not, any comments this evening on agenda items, non-agenda items. Okay, seen none, then we'll go ahead and move on to item number nine, which is the written reports. The fire department has the first ones up. You have that report in your packet, but I'm sure you've had an opportunity to review it prior to this time, but I'll go ahead and ask the chief if he has anything to add to his written report.
Just the new package he made early, early. I'm trying to print my order down, then cancel, so we got theirs. Good surprise that he didn't do us.
All right, very good. I, looks, well, it appears that we had a save fourth of July anyway, so that's a good thing. All right, then we'll go ahead and move on to the Public Works report. Again, that is also in your packet. You can see that they had a, although we're having a hot July, it looks like we're keeping up with anything, I'll go ahead and recognize Public Works Director and ask if there's anything additional that you'd like to add to your report.
I don't believe so.
All right, very good. And that brings us to the city clerk's report. I know you also have some travel this month for training, but do you have anything you'd like to add to your report?
I just want to thank the guy in advance for being there.
Wait until you get back.
And we need to circle back to the Board of Justice and planning committee, so if anybody has names, people.
I think we have had a couple of people express some interest, they've emailed. I don't think we've completed that, and I don't think even with the interest, we've had enough to fill both committees, so.
Get close.
Do we have an update on that? How close are we on? It's one full and we're missing a couple on the other, is that how it is?
Yeah. We have names for all the spots. There's a couple we need to touch base with and make sure that they are reflected in the form of this year's day.
How do you, how do you want to handle that? Do you want to wait till they're full and then bring everything to council at that time, or do you want to do a piece of the whole?
Um, I think we can probably, we should be able to confirm and get all the names by the next council meeting, and we can proceed.
Do we have anything pending for either board?
No.
So we've got some time here.
Yeah.
Is that all right with the council? Okay, all right, thank you. Anything else for your report?
Would you want those people present then at the next meeting, or would you want to discuss it then and then invite them to the following meetings for the day that needs to be presented? Does it need to be?
I don't think they need to be present. I think we can probably look at it at the council level and then decide from there how they want to move forward with it. Anything else on your report?
No.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to item number ten, which is approval of the consent agenda. Do we have any additions to the items on the consent agenda?
None.
Then I would seek a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Moved by Sarason?
Second.
Seconded by Menson. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a vote, please. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we move on to new business. First item is the ACDC special event permits. I'll hold your food.
I see. What?
I'll hold the food.
I hope you guys have a hobby. Actually, you know, watch it. No, I already offered it. I did, I offered it.
I already had it made good.
And it's still hot.
What do you got here?
It's at the point.
All right, I'm gonna have it supplied. Thank you.
Maybe it's really good. It's still hot.
I have an easy.
I'm gonna make you all hungry so we know where you're going, when you're done.
I'll go ahead and seek a motion to approve.
I'll give that. I like that.
Every time you come here now, you're gonna bring something. Prior to seeking a motion.
We went to the city, or the ACDC meeting last night, and, you know, of course, I was volunteer, here I am. They said that last September or something, they had, that they were approved for Diamond Club or for benefit days this year, and said that I should just put in an amendment.
Amendment.
So I'm like, we should just put a new one in. So here's the new one. So we're asking permission to have Auburnett days as normal on August 3rd this year, do like every year. Is there anything you need from me? We have the searches for security, same as we had last year. Do you have a current copy of their insurance?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Yes, that's the update.
Is there anything else?
I think we cut the chase here. Do we have an application on file?
Yep.
It should be in the packet.
Yeah, I see that one's there.
I know, no changes from normal, so yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be the same.
Any questions, council, on the packet as submitted?
I would appreciate some kind of flyer to get up on the website, so.
I would love it, too.
Yeah, so, just email to Danielle, email to the city clerk, she will answer that. Otherwise, nothing else.
I don't have any questions on looking forward to the days, but I, oh, I guess I do have a question, the same one I asked before.
You know, it's gonna be on those Carolina fries, are they, any of you on those?
They are not, they have not responded to me, so I don't, right? So I'm looking for a new vendor. We still have Twittles. They need the puddle cakes.
All right.
We'll, we'll have, um.
You're mad about the Carolina fries, no?
Have you ever heard of?
Now you wanna buy.
Have you ever heard of Comfort Foods out of Center Point?
Yes, I meant that.
That's who I'm looking at right now. I need to talk to everybody about it, but that's, that's what I'm considering, because I like doing local, local and.
Do you do, ask a favor, and run by all business places?
Yes, I was sitting there thinking about that as I sit beside Craig.
And everybody know, so nobody gets involved. I said that, I said, get some, get some.
Got it. I'm right now, I'm going right next door, and I see more.
Thank you.
Guys?
You're very kind. Okay, then let's go ahead and have a motion then to approve of the benefit days as submitted, the application as submitted. Moved by Menson, seconded by Trump. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, you pass. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Be sure.
All right. The next item is a resolution 07-2019-01, setting the date for a public hearing on urban renewal plan development. This is in your packet. This is in the preparation for, which would facilitate the undertaking of a new urban renewal project in the urban renewal area. You can look it over in your packet. This only, this will require it by roll call, correct? Looked it up here, so.
Um.
Or no, no, this one is not.
It's just setting the hearing.
It's 02, 20, 02 requires a roll call. So this is one that is just gonna require a, just the vote. So any questions on this resolution setting the hearing for an urban renewal plan amendment?
We have an urban renewal plan and the location of which we are planning for the fire station to go, to be able to utilize funding in the urban renewal area. We have to amend the plan to state the purpose that we're going to use the land for. So we're setting a hearing to amend the urban renewal plan to state that we are planning to put municipal fire station on the property.
The hearing's for the next council meeting, the August 8th. Then that'll, that hearing will then approve it, and then we'll have one on the additional council meeting after that, that's for the actual.
Correct. Yeah, so this is just setting the hearing so that we can amend that urban renewal plan, and this was what our bonding attorney had, the direction that they had given us to take, so that we could utilize that urban renewal area for bonding purposes.
So prior to the next meeting, you'll have the urban renewal, and plus the amendments, we'll get that over and fully understand.
Yes. The bonding attorneys are facilitating that process, so I will get the documents from them.
Okay, so I'll need a motion to approve Resolution 07-2019-01, which sets the date for the urban renewal plan, which is the urban renewal area for the construction of the new municipal fire station. Moved by Shant, seconded by Sarason. Any other discuss, or all those in favor on this? I don't think there's any other discussion, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right, the motion carries, so that's 2019-01. Thank you. All right, and then I'll go ahead and recognize you, Danielle, for 11C, the utility rates.
Um, it was requested that we look at the current utility rates to see about increasing them, just knowing that in the future, we're gonna have to do something with our sewer system and potentially the water system and the large expense that would be, looking at what our rates are and what the need would be, so that way, there is a need to do, so we wouldn't have to have a huge increase all at one time, be prepared, and potentially have increased in preparation for that to happen. So just starting the conversation on that, I think I could put some information in the packet with where our current rates are at, and then there's some information on how that's calculated, and there's a copy of a customer bill to show how it's currently calculated now. And then I also put just some information on what it would look like, what the amounts would be if we did decide to do any kind of percentage increase, so just for yoga is to look at records.
And I think the key is, it would, rather than be a one-time rate increase, it would be incremental, you know, like scheduled. Rather than do an order, a vote to raise the rate one time and then have to do it again, you would set in motion a series of increases over time, so that if we can match this need, I mean, it's, our wastewater permit has expired, and we've been told over and over again, there'll be more, more testing and more stringent numbers that we have to meet, and probably for us, even more critical than that, is we're gonna run out of space, we're not gonna be able to hold, if we start bypassing a lot, they'll really come down on us, so that's probably the number one need currently, looking into the near future, not really short future, but it's coming, so. It could be as simple as adding radiation, which is not that expensive, or it could be having to completely do a whole new system.
I've reached out to other communities in the area, getting together all the information to do a comparison of their rates. A lot of them are doing that incremental increases. A lot of them have had to put in expensive systems recently, so I should have more information on that by the next.
I'd like to make a motion to the table list till next month, when we have more data, and then everybody has a chance to, very take a look at this, make your eyes have a little wonder.
Wouldn't just stay. It's fine. I, but.
Are you gonna, is there any way to come up with some kind of future cost projections on, I mean, you might, radiation's one thing, new cells and other things, but something to go on?
Yeah, it'd be extremely hard, because not knowing what the new permit's gonna state, what kind of limits we have to reach with our removals, that's gonna be extremely hard to say. The latest that I heard is it's just gonna be ammonia removal. Our ammonia numbers are good right now. I think they would, we could clean the water, take the ammonia out, just like doing what we're doing, but if the EPA could change a ruling next month, that trickles down to the DNR, and then we get the permit, and all of a sudden, it's half of what we're, of what we're currently taking out, and we're scrambling then, at that point, because then they give us probably a two, three-year window to be compliant, and that's not very much time to figure out what kind of system you're gonna need and get it designed. Coggin's new facility is a mechanical plant, which I don't think we would ever need, but it was six or seven million dollars. The, when Walker did their Sager cell five, six years ago, that was almost three million? Airation would probably still take a million dollars, since we don't have power up there, so.
I mean, the whole idea is, is we don't have to increase rates fifty percent at one time.
That's what you hear from most of these cities, that find out all of a sudden that they have to have a new, new system, they gotta double their rates, you know, and that's where you hear the loudest complaints.
I did talk to Connie, Miss from Walker, and she had gone to a class that they talk about how to try to look at your rates and see where they would need to be, and she said that she could come in August and meet us and discuss and look at the rates would be, so.
It was relatively new in June of 2016, but I was on the council, and I voted no for these increases then. It wasn't because I was against the increases, it was because I was against the method being used at the time to increase them, because at the time, the council just voted to do it instead of notifying all the people. We have a good mechanism in place now for notifying people, our newsletter, our Facebook page and things like that. It doesn't matter, no, I don't vote anyway, so the council can do what they want, but I still would like to say in my comment, that I think it's good to notify the folks of why we're raising the rates. If we just tell them why, and they have an opportunity then to see whether they like it or not, some people aren't gonna like it, why. I live here, I don't like to pay more rates than I have to, but if we have the need, that's what it costs to them in the city sometimes, so I get that, so.
I think we should have a public hearing.
Which is fine, too.
Just not like.
Well, I think we'd have to, because we're amending the ordinance.
We didn't last time.
Oh. Can you do some research and see if there are any grants available? I know we don't need the money now, but just to understand what other options are also out there, because I'm sure there's gotta be some kind of assistance for big tickbangers.
There's all kinds of funding, too, if there's, even if there's grant money available, you guess, RFP comes into play, and there's other funding sources that can help out with that kind of thing, so.
Here, the rates you charge, the highs, the bearing on it.
Yeah.
Well, you know, these rates aren't gonna cover three million dollars anyway, so I'm just curious.
Yeah, right, right.
Coggin has said that they got some grant funding for the USDA, I think they have some grant funding for those types of scenarios, so it'll be something we'll definitely.
Let me take that back. There was a hearing, but it was all waived and done at once, instead of doing it three rounds.
Okay.
That's right, it was, but it was all just boom, right? Which I voted no to.
We've got a lot of research ahead of us, I mean, I, as far as knowing how much we have to spend, that'd be nearly impossible, and the DNR won't even give you a hint of when they think our new permit need.
And you don't really want to vote that way.
No, yeah, don't push them too hard, you know, but yeah, they usually, if it's, if it's a big enough change, they'll give you three or four or five years to get it done, to come into compliance, but, you know, you don't know until they find out what limits you gotta try and meet, and then you'll have a chance to try and meet them, and if you can't meet them, then you gotta have to put a plan in place to go.
Danielle, I'd also like to see what this increase means for total.
Yeah, I was thinking that, too. It doesn't really relate too much, if you just see.
I like to see them per household impact, but what means for our.
Yeah, because I was thinking about that, I need to pull the revenue and do an increase on that, so I'll get that, too, as well.
Other questions, council?
No, thanks, sir.
Any other?
I'm good.
All right, that takes us to 11D, which is Public Works Concrete Street Patching.
Pretty sure that we plugged in a number a bunch of times that included some concrete street patching, and so I finally cornered Dan Sherman the other day, and we went around and looked at several areas, and he gave me some estimates on repairing these areas, and there's, if you wanted to go crazy, we could do all kinds of concrete patching, but these, to me, are the worst. They're areas where the concrete has, has sunk. That one is probably the hardest to see, but there's probably at least an inch lip on that saw cut, and you can see where the curve is uneven, and that's about an inch drop, now the other side, the other curb saw cut. Um, you know, right in there, it's pretty close to an inch of drop, and.
That's North Third.
No, that's actually First Street.
Oh.
But we're coming. North Third, there's, there's a place on, on Third Avenue. There is, that one is Third Avenue, just north of Roosevelt. That one's really bad, there's probably at least a two-inch drop there, and that is newer concrete, so I'm gonna guess that there was some kind of sewer work was done at that house at some point, and it just didn't get backfilled well enough, compacted well enough, and it now has sunk, and.
Is that, is this, that one remove and replace, or is that that jacking thing?
No, no, I, most of this stuff, there's, there's too many cracks and the pieces are too small to jack them, so.
This is all remove and replace?
It's all, all remove and replace, and his bid is basically nine bucks a square foot remove and replace, which I feel is, is a good number. This one is also kind of hard to tell, because of the grass growing over the edge, but this is on Howard Street, but that one's probably at least an inch and a half drop, you know, and, and did they get the bid in front of them, or no?
Yeah, it's in the back.
Yeah, they're, they're always there, that's basically the cost. The one you haven't seen yet is at the intersection of Naylor and Second, and that's been broken up for a long time, and there's lots of little, that whole area, so that's the big take item on there. To me, there's not a lot of traffic there, people don't turn the corner that direction that often, if we were gonna put one off, I'd probably put that one off, but it's only gonna get worse, you know, as the years go by. When it's broken into that small pieces now, you wonder how long it's gonna need before it really blows up, you know, get another spring like we had, where it was pushed and all that kind of freed up, maybe it's time to just get it done. And then the, the other one that we looked at, Craig had mentioned to me that Radkowiczki dumped it, dumped his wheelchair on one of these. This is, this is residential, this is sidewalk in front of Craig, well, it's Craig's house driveway, and both sides of that are pretty severe, as far as being able to get a wheelchair through there. It's pretty easy to see how he could have tipped his chair over, going off, one wheel off and then over. I did the research the best I can in our ordinances, if I'm reading it right, that would be all the property owner's expense, because it's no different than a residential. Our sidewalk regulating, regulations say that it starts out giving the specifications for residential sidewalks and where they should be, and then it goes on to say, "In the central business district, sidewalks shall extend from the property line to the curve unless the council shall establish a different distance due to circumstances." So in our central business district, it's, the property line is probably right where the concrete meets the grass, I mean, you look at it on the assessor's site, unless you find a property, then you don't know exactly, but that means that the property owner will be responsible all the way to the curb. This is news to Craig, you know, so I think that's probably why he's here, and I didn't know their, what your position was on getting this taken care of, one way or the other, maybe giving Craig the opportunity to, to pay for it over time, like we did with other sidewalk projects, or if the city did wanna expend any funds to get this problem corrected, since it is a kind of hazard in our city, throwing it out there, for your opinion. I hate to see, you know, after hearing about wheelchair tipping over that kind of thing.
None of that's ADA compliant, but the kind of curb looking thing, that's way up my, my opinion, it needs to be addressed immediately, especially if somebody tipped over.
Yeah, well, honestly, fixing completely, what, what's in Dan's quote is really just to, to cut two chunks out where, where it transitions, one chunk on either side, because when I had him there, I'm like, I don't know how far we're gonna go here, so just tell me what the quick, easy fix would be, so it'd just be a couple of small chunks where it transitions. So if a person was really gonna make that right, you'd have to go all the way through the driveway, so it would be a higher dollar amount than that, but there, again, we're, you know, Craig's sitting here unaware that this was coming at him, so no, no time to plan or anything, so.
I don't see anything wrong with it, like you said, take the two bad panels out, fix the problem.
Yeah, and that's four hundred and fifty dollars.
Well, if the council agrees, there's six of them on the list, you wanna just deal with them one through six? At the pleasure of the council here, if you would, or are you good with dealing with everything on this list?
We're gonna pick the largest sidewalk.
Oh, that, you, yeah, 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 I was getting to that. We're gonna replace that hydrant this summer, so there's no sense fixing the sidewalk, because we'll have to tear it up, fix the hydrant. So it's coming, that'll be part of that hydro repair project that we, we decided to do too, so. We looked at that, that day too, but I just told them not to quote it, because I realized we're gonna pull that hydrant out.
What's the storm drain repair?
That is the storm box on the south side of Roosevelt, right by the railroad tracks. Last year, if you remember, last summer, there was a panel that was way sunk. When we got to looking at the reason it sunk and it, and then we lost all the dirt underneath it, was because the storm box was all broken up. So we patched the street surface to get us by until this summer, where we did, oh, take the top off of it and fix the box, so we quit undermining the street. Cause right now, there's huge open cracks where the water can just, quote, roll the dirt out from underneath the street. That's a, almost a has to be fixed scenario, like we need that, so. Oh, and he, I know, he has no idea how to quote it, but we had a bridge inspection a couple of years ago on Burness Station Culvert, and there's some swallowing, they call it, on the concrete surface that the county would like repaired, and so Dan will do it, it's not gonna be terribly expensive, it's just, he doesn't, there's no way to know how to, how to estimate it, because, you know, may or may not have to drill in pegs or rebar in order to hold the patch. He won't know until he gets down in there and starts to.
She can give us a title materials list at least, so we have.
Yeah.
Just kinda itemize it out, that'd be the best way to.
I think according to our bridge inspection, we're gonna have to do it no matter what.
No, that's fine, but that gives us some expectation of, and we at least have something to go back to.
Yeah.
No, if it's reasonable.
Yeah, he said he can definitely do it, but he's a flatwork guy, so doing that kind of work is a little bit, yeah, I'm sure he can. But yeah, that's, I guess, I feel like we should do everything that, the thing that's, the only thing that's in limbo is that Naylor and, and Second area, that could wait, just simply from the fact it doesn't have traffic.
Did you bring up the first one on Howard Street?
Uh, that one's Howard.
Any issue with doing this one, council? Number two is Third Street.
Yep.
Any issue with Third Street repair, as a cost of eighteen hundred? Third one is Rose, Roosevelt, the cost of twenty-five hundred.
Oh, we don't have a photo of that, we don't have a photo of the storm box.
If that is a repair, it'll just keep washing.
Yeah, yeah, they will be patching the street again, yeah.
Any issue with it, though, council? Number four, this is Craig's, Mr. Tittler's.
Are we gonna address that, because technically it's his sidewalk?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Well, it wasn't that severe until we laid the blacktop. Once we did the blacktop, it really, it made things buckle. Leonard, I don't know, but, you know, I used to come around here with my skid steer, and I, I know that I could just lift a little bit and get by it. I can't lift by it now, you gotta pull it up to a bar, or you're gonna bang it.
It looks to me, though, where that kind of patio is where the bulk is, that's your concrete sinking way, because the rest of your, the rest of your driveway behind that, nothing's moving, nothing's sunk. Doesn't look like anything's lifted, it just looks like that pie shape has sunk.
Well then, can I get by with cutting the pie shape out, going to the end? Well, I'll tell you what Dan's estimate was for, his, his thought process was basically to cut out a square like this, and a square like this to address, because this is a pretty big bump too. And, and just basically address those areas, you know, like here and here. That's, and he felt like we could get it so it was safe and, and compliant and, by cutting out those areas. And that's four hundred and fifty. I mean, we, we gave everybody on all of our other sidewalk, sidewalk projects time to pay for this, if that's an option. I guess the bigger question is if we want to assume part of the responsibility of the, of the repair.
Well, whether the city pays a hundred percent, whether we split the percentage with you, whether you do it yourself, I guess, first question is, if you do it yourself, do we, do you use your own quotes, or do we still oversee it, or what?
Uh, no, if he does it himself, it, it should be his own deal. I mean, there's ordinance regulations to follow, he'd have to follow our sidewalk ordinances, so.
Anyway, okay, so there is a, there is a quote here to do it for four hundred and fifty dollars, for the decisions from council on how they.
Unless he wanted to pursue other quotes.
I don't know, I haven't talked to Dan.
You wanna, I mean, it's been this way for a little while now, you wanna table it till August and give him a chance to come up with?
Cause my other concern is I don't wanna witch hunt him, I mean, there's several other sidewalks in town, and it's like, we're going this way, and they're, you know, I'm not talking to areas of town that don't have side, but that's a whole different discussion, but there are other hazards as well, so I don't wanna witch hunt Craig here other than we've had an incident. So I prefer to table it and see what you come back with, I mean, we're willing to.
How about I throw a bag of potable patch in that one, in that one spot, just to prevent, maybe if possible, another incident until we get this figured out?
Yeah, we're kinda ramming back, so it's a little tough.
No problem? So in.
Yeah.
It's four hundred and fifty dollars on a heavily traveled city area downtown.
So to, just to bring up another thing, perhaps we need to address our ordinances to get them up to the 2019 standard pushing of what is this thing, I have a little quid pro quo, but.
Oh, yeah.
So we can address that later on.
Yeah.
Probably take that till next meeting?
Just, just this piece of it.
Just this piece?
Oh, word, unless somebody wants to.
No, just this piece.
Just that piece is fine.
I'd like to see if Craig can find an alternative, I mean.
Man, I'm gonna use Dan, I got, I've used, I use these down at my buildings down in Marion exclusively, so.
Well, we get a discount for, I mean, for our volumes, so he's probably not gonna get so much.
Yeah, I don't know, but we'll give you the chance.
Yeah.
Well, he mentioned that, Dan, you're suburban, so.
Yeah, right, towards tailgate, other than that with the soap block, it wasn't bad, Leonard.
Yeah. Okay.
Alright, so excluding number four pending further review, number five is at Naylor First, can we bring that one up? This would be a nine thousand dollar repair.
There's a lot of concrete there, but I mean, we block it out, try to get to saw cuts and areas that, you know, where it makes sense.
Pleasure to council.
I would prefer to wait on this until we finish the other work at the end of that street, just because there won't be equipment going that way, and I hate to, if Dan gets to this first, we run risk of.
And even if it went to next year, it's not a big deal, I, I just feel like we need to get going on this, or we're gonna have a whole bunch of really bad talks.
I, I'd say we take this, keep it on the list, but it's not one I would make a comment on.
Any objection from the council on that?
No.
Last one is 208 First Street.
That's just right up the, right up the street from Naylor and Second.
Yeah, that one's bad.
That one's bad.
Okay, so that's an approval?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll be doing number one, number two, number three, and number six. And if I did my math correctly, that's a total of four thousand six hundred and sixty dollars.
I don't have any more than that.
So that is twenty-five hundred for this storm drain?
Oh, the storm drain too.
Oh, and I missed one, do it again. Eighteen hundred plus eighteen hundred plus twenty-five hundred plus twenty-one sixty, right? Eighty-two sixty.
And we did, put some repairs into motion.
Yeah.
You agree with that math, Daniel, eighty-two sixty. Alright, given that, then I'd seek a, a motion to approve funds in the amount of eighty-two, uh, eight thousand two hundred and sixty dollars to Dan Sherman for the, the street improvements.
Totally.
Moved by Vincent, second by Trump, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no, you'll go ahead and get that all taken care of, guy?
Yes.
And these will require any street closures?
Nope.
Alright, very good.
Lane, lane closures.
Lane closures, yeah, okay. Alright, 11E, Public Works Driveway Culvert on North Street, go ahead, guy.
There's one culvert right before the tracks that is open and flowing and in the right position, so I did not replace it when we were replacing the other driveways on North Street. And I'm not sure who owns the house, but Craig Wright approached me, he would love to have a new culvert, and he's willing to pay towards that new culvert. Partially because it's a very narrow culvert and narrow drive, and also because he just feels like he wouldn't want any water issues there, so he'd be willing to pitch in. I just, I mean, I stopped there simply because it was open and flowing. And, and it's hard to tell, it looks like it's partially plugged with us, it's just weeds and a few rocks and things in the end. It is open, it is functioning, but we did dig out the ditch on both sides of it, so the water will flow.
Are you looking towards the south on this?
That shot is looking towards the southwest, basically. You know, and.
Do you see any of the ground? Do you think it needs to be replaced?
Well, no, I mean, it, it, that's why I left it, it's, it's open and it's flowing. But we also have the opportunity to, to improve our stormwater flow with him footing part of the bill, so I'm looking at that part of it too, because I don't know how much he's willing to, to foot, to do, to get it done, but we can get the same culverts for free. I think we put in the agenda here, you know, I'm, I'm estimating four hundred dollars for the labor to get it done, under the seat it, a couple hundred dollars for the rock, and we have to get the excavator back, but I do have a couple of little projects I can do with the excavator while, you know, we had it back, so.
Best guess on route, cost to replace that?
Yeah, I would say nine hundred to a thousand dollars would replace that, that culvert. And I think it's a kind of a win for us, we need to pay half of that amount, you know, we said five hundred bucks, and we'll stick it in there, that's a, as long as we have all of our stuff lined up, that's a part of a day job, really, to actually stick it in, we gotta go down the pretext and get the culverts, but.
If that were a new house, would the culvert be our responsibility or the homeowners', cause I know in the county, does the homeowner put in, or does they put in the culvert?
Well, yeah, the, yeah, in the county they do. The reason that we replace these was because our stormwater was impeded, so.
Right, but if this were a new home?
Oh, if it were a new home, yeah, I don't know in the county, I guess in this county where I grew up, we got the culvert squated in for free on the driveway, the county did it, but I heard they changed that.
I think in Lynn County.
Lynn County cost you.
Does it?
Lynn County installs it, but homeowner pays.
They pay for the, they pay for the tube maybe, is that the deal? Cause I know that's what my former county did, to the labor.
I think, you know, home, but if you're off the cover, I think you buy it too. I don't think they pay too much towards putting it in.
So I can tell you this, in Marion, if there's a stormwater issue and they decide to put in a new fresh drain, Marion number three driveway, they pick up Marion.
Or having an issue is the problem here.
Yeah.
This is a homeowner preference.
Yeah, you're right, and that's kind of where I was getting at.
Yeah, we're having an issue, I'm a hoarder.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just, it's not very often you get financial assistance, that's why, that's why I'm pitching it, you know? He can call someone and put a wider driveway in if he wants, I mean, I'll just monitor it, make sure it's done right, and he can do it. On the flip side, it, it would, you know, it's kind of our infrastructure, and it would improve the flow downhill, because it'd be a little bigger tube than that, than I would put in. Maybe he would pay for the whole thing and we'd do it, I.
So this may be a silly question, the water flows to the north, correct?
Yeah, well, it flows, yeah, north, the only thing is, yeah.
Yeah. All the pipes behind that are how big?
Well, there's smaller pipes up the hill, but everything above this is, is fifteen inch, except for the, that driveway you see behind it, no, go back to the other one. That one and this one are twelve inch, and the reason I put fifteen inch tubes in is because that was the best quality of those seconds that were at the quarry, and you're, you're not usually supposed to put a bigger culvert on the backside of a smaller one, but that ditch is almost never full, so I had the opportunity to upsize, and so I did, you know.
What's your recommendation?
I guess we need to feel Craig out, I'd like to see a better culvert in there, you know? See what he's willing to pay, I mean, I can fine tune my estimate a little bit, we could table this, it doesn't have to go in today or this month, we can do it in August or September.
Why don't we, why don't we table it, you talk to him, give, give feel for what he is willing to do? I'm on offense in this one.
Yeah, he came to me and asked, so I'm like, I, I told him I gotta pitch it to the council, I don't know, we don't normally get a request for an upgrade like this, so I gotta figure it out, no problem.
Nobody usually comes and says, please tear off my driveway, we don't, that's my offense.
Okay, so this item's tabled?
Yep.
Alright, 11E, table pending further information from the owner. Alright, we'll move on to 12A, this is a update the Alliant franchise fee, which will have a resol- revolution, resolution zero seven twenty nineteen zero two, approval of the, adoption of the franchise.
This is a continuation of what we've discussed in previous council meetings, if you weren't at that meeting. In short, I'll, have Daniel explain it, some more details on it, including a meeting that, I don't think council was at, I know I wasn't, but, this franchise basically takes over the, the portion of it from Alliant. It came up at a previous council meeting, we wanted to make sure that our partners, specifically the school, who is affected by this, it's an increase for them, wasn't, it didn't hit them in such a detrimental way that was gonna be problematic for us and our relationship with them moving forward. I wasn't at that meeting, but it doesn't sound like it's gonna be a big issue?
No, we were appreciative that we had kept them involved and that we had wanted their input, but they said in the amount of expense in relation to their budget, we'd have mentioned that issue, so.
Okay, so I, I think that was the only concern we have with moving forward with this. Anything else you wanna say about the franchise portion of it, of how it works, or why we're doing this?
So I did a little bit more research, and it looks like in two thousand twelve, we had established a franchise with electric and natural gas, but they had put a placeholder in there to elect a franchise fee. So when they did this ordinance initially in two thousand twelve, it was at zero percent. So that way, if they did decide to, if a council came in and decided to implement this fee, they could do so without having to go through the entire process of establishing the franchise. So what we need to do is if you, the, the council decides to go ahead and implement this one percent fee, we just need to amend that ordinance to set that percentage in place. And so the original ordinance back in two thousand twelve was for twenty-five years, so it would be up in twenty thirty-seven, we would need to review it if we wanted to renew that franchise fee. The other option is to do a whole new ordinance for twenty-five years, that would replace the one that was done in two thousand twelve. But the gentleman from Alliant who facilitates this with all the cities really said there's no reason to, to do a whole new one, just lengthens the process and the timeframe. So if the council wants to proceed with this, what we would need to do would be set a date, do a resolution to set a date for a public hearing, which would essentially be at the next council meeting. And then at that time, you could do the reverse reading, and then if you wanted to do the other readings, you could do those at the following council meetings, or you could decide to waive. And then once we, if it gets passed, then we would let Alliant know, and you would get that put in place. And then at that point, it would, they have to present it to the Iowa Utilities Board to let them know that they're removing the local option sales tax from the Alliant bills and replacing it with a franchise fee, and then they would start collecting it. And then they give those funds to us quarterly after they're received and audited.
Okay.
Just, just to bring back. This fee's already in place. It's already coming out of my bill regardless, but right now it's going everywhere that I'm coming.
Right.
This way it comes, tell them.
But the school wasn't exempt from.
Exactly.
Are there any other tax exemptions in the city that would have an Alliant bill? Cause that would be the only other thing.
Churches maybe.
Then their bills would also be affected by that one percent. Just because they're currently, if they're tax exempt, they're not paying the one percent of the option sales tax.
It, how much was it gonna cost the school in a year?
The schools.
It was like eighteen hundred dollars?
Between fourteen and fifteen hundred dollars a year, and that's what their annual expenditure of.
Those churches are already building houses, they don't even notice it. Cause the school's bill is like fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars a month.
You have two items on here, I and double I, or, or resolution zero two and zero. zero three. One looks like it establishes, the other one is to set the hearing.
So...
Are you wanting an amendment, or you wanted to set a hearing, or you wanting to establish?
So, the first resolution, um, I apologize, didn't discuss this. The first resolution is to adopt a revenue purpose statement.
Yep.
Uh, which is in correspondence to the Iowa code. It basically states how the city intends to use the revenues that are received, um, from those franchise fees.
Because local option sales tax is already, there are rules in place, right? So, we're essentially establishing those rules.
Well, this is for, yeah, for the franchise.
Right. Because that same money we were getting through local option already had rules in place.
Well, these, this is stating that we're gonna follow the rules relating to the franchise.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm good.
And then the following resolution is to set the date for the public hearing. If you so choose to do that, it's the next council meeting. And then there's a motion that needs to be put in place to say what percentage you choose to, um, elect for the franchise fee.
All that done here on this one? And do we have that percentage? Do we know that percentage?
It would be the one percent if you do not want any change to any current resident bills.
One percent with no change. Alright. Okay, for the first one, resolution zero seven twenty nineteen zero two, this will have to be done by roll call. It's in your packet. You've had an opportunity to, um, take a look at this, and you've had the explanation there from Danielle. Are there any questions about resolution zero seven twenty nineteen zero two? If not, seek a motion for resolution zero seven twenty nineteen zero two, moved by Sarisson, seconded by Trump. I will need this by roll call. If you can call that out, please, clerk.
Counselor Trump?
Yes.
Counselor Sean?
Aye.
Counselor Saris?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, let the record reflect it. Pass the form with one counsel with the apps. Thank you. Alright, uh, let's go ahead then. What?
Menzen made the second, not Trump.
Oh, sorry.
I think they said the same.
Or did you say it same time?
Sorry, this is, I'm gonna misheard, sorry.
Do you wanna share it?
Yeah, you, you guys wanna?
Hyphenate them.
I, I get your joke and all, all I heard was right, so...
Okay, then we'll go ahead and move on to resolution zero seven twenty nineteen zero three. This is to set the date on, uh, the hearing for the utility franchise fees. Again, you have it in your packet, had an opportunity to read it, and you've heard the explanation. We do not need a roll call on this. I just need a, uh, motion to approve the resolution. Moved by Sarisson, seconded by Menzen. Any other discussion on this? Hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no. This motion also carries. Will you go ahead and set the hearing date, please?
Yeah.
Alright, then we'll, we'll deal with that. And then the next item is the motion for establishing the franchise fee percentage, currently recommended at the one percent. Uh, but we'll go ahead and hear any discussion for modifying that percentage. Do you know if anyone else do it different?
Oh, yeah, other cities have a higher percentages. But if you, the higher the percent, the in, then your residents are gonna see an increase. Anything over one percent, they're gonna see an increase in their bill.
I think we talked about this before, the small one percent, the other percent. It doesn't affect most people's bill, uh, generally, so...
As a reference, uh, if you want to know, the gentleman from Alliant, that, um, the average Alliant bill would increase was a dollar sixty-five per additional percent, um, for electric, and then sixty-five cents per additional percent for natural gas. So, any percent above the one percent would be, on average, a two dollar per month increase.
If there's, uh, no other discussion on that, I'd, uh, seek a motion to set the franchise fee at one percent, which is a equal amount to what it currently is.
Totally.
Moved by Menzen, seconded by Sarisson. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no. That motion also carries. Okay, we're down to the last portion of it. A motion establishing the franchise fee percentage for natural gas. Is that also a one percent? Any, uh, variance to that? Hearing done, and I'd also seek a motion to set it at one percent. Moved by Sean's, seconded by Sarisson. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no. Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Uh, interesting conversation I had the other day with a gentleman, uh, from, uh, out of the power plant, and they said that that completely is shut down within three years, you know, where they, they store the rods on site and this and that and everything. And I asked the question, then where are we gonna get our supplemental power for that, you know, that everything had established for the area? And they said, I'm not sure Alliant handles that, and they have something mechanism in place to bring that in at maybe a cost. And I always thought, maybe a cost? So, who knows what, uh, what that's gonna lead to in the future. Okay, alright. Uh, B, an update on the city logo. Do we have it? Yes, we do, and there it is. Okay, this came up last month, and we, uh, we talked about different logos. Actually, we've been talking about this four months. This particular one was quite popular. Uh, we didn't take any action on it because we didn't have a full council, and we felt that that might be the most appropriate action before we made any decisions on this. In fact, there was no real concrete way on changing officially the city logo, whether or not the council would make the decision, or whether or not there'd be a public hearing, or whether or not we would just do it by reso or law. Uh, but there was general consensus that it, it did need updated, I think, so, uh, this is where we're at, uh, with it right now, so there won't be any comments anyone may have on this.
I think someone asked for the water tower, because they liked that from a previous design and put in with the core plan.
This is a refreshed design from last month.
Yeah, just, uh, the, basically the water tower added in, in the background.
I sent it to Josh, since he's not here.
I think he was here last month, though, when he saw them.
I sent him this new one, and he said, I think it looks good. So, I'm relaying that to you, Josh.
I think it's okay. Maybe the water tower be outlined, I don't know. I guess it doesn't really...
I think it's the best we've seen yet.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not sure I'm crazy about changing the local expenses or anything, but...
Do we have it in a ton of places that are on our vehicles and letters, letterhead?
You know, there's only two vehicles that carry it, the dump truck and the, and the pickup. Um, the sign above City Hall.
Sign above City Hall.
There's no sign on the city shop, so...
Road signs.
The two signs.
Yeah, the two road signs would be different, but we were, have been talking at length about trying to get those changed anyway, and it just failed every attempt we made.
The water payment box, it's just...
The water payment box, yeah.
On the detail, so, which we're gonna update it anyway.
If you have them, make stickers for the, the truck doors. You just make a new sticker for the water payment box.
A lot of stationery, junk, or anything like that.
Checks, envelopes, letterhead, agenda, it's, yeah. Yeah, 'cause I just ordered, we were out of checks, so we just got in stock that and envelopes, so it'll be a little while before those get up.
There's nothing says it has to be a, an immediate change override. We can use up all of our old things.
Do we have a methodology on how we wanna do it? Do we want to put this out on our Facebook or our website, or do we wanna put it in the newsletter, or do we, uh, do we want, uh, any comment from the public or anything, or do we want to...
We only raise it to socialize like that if you're, if you're the bigger voice on it. I mean, we had several designs we were trying to decipher and wanted to vote.
I do think there's an ordinance that establishes the logo in the...
Yeah, there is. There's an ordinance. We can change that at the same time in the resolution.
Wave a move down one, but yeah, we can do everything. We can do everything at once.
I think we can also put it out on Facebook, but just word it carefully as if we're not necessarily looking back as much as presenting our refresh.
Is, is that the, Sarah, the council?
Put it on social. That's the logo, put it on social media, uh, with the general con- we can refine it later, but with the general context that will be editing the, uh, ordinance, give the ordinance number for modifying the logo or require a public hearing. Folks don't wanna have done that. Public hearing, well, here, um, that might work.
You just done that all really fast.
No, it's just, I'll say it again when we're done.
Do you need to set, uh, or do a motion for a public hearing, or not this time?
If we're truly gonna do it, which it looks like we are, then we'll, uh, we'll do everything at once. We can roll it together. I'll explain it when we're done.
So, we need to, do we need a motion for a public hearing on August date? If we're gonna have a public hearing, I have to publish that.
That's a lot to do, pop a, a gen- item that just said logo. So, we got time to do it. That's a lot to get on there from. Might be a stretch.
We may not change it for six months.
Right. We got time to get it all there. Alright, update on city, uh, projects. Number one, the fire station. Um, won't get comment from everybody here, but, uh, I just wanted to say that, uh, you seen the, uh, resolution to move forward with our bonding aspect of it. We did have, I mentioned earlier, another meeting on this, on the design. Uh, we're at a point where we're in the final, if not the final parts of the design of the fire station. Timeline, uh, we were looking at doing bidding yet this year. I think it's probably gonna be spring of next year, since we couldn't do construction yet this year anyway, which still gives us ample time for fundraising for the duration of this year. I think the city in conjunction with the fire department is going to, uh, try to do more, uh, I don't wanna say aggressive, but step up our efforts on fundraising. We would like to see several hundred thousand dollars in fundraising from, uh, the township and from the city. Uh, the more funding that we can get through fundraising, uh, for this community project, the more, uh, well, not only the more that we can do, but the less that the city would either have to bond for or utilize our funds that we have on hand. So, I think that's an important aspect, and, uh, we'll keep folks notified of where we're at in that process and what it's gonna cost. We knew it was gonna be hundreds of thousands when we stepped into the project and, uh, were prepared to see the bidding through, but, um, we're gonna need some assistance, and hopefully we get them from the public. So, I'll go right to left this time, councilman. Absolutely. Well, as an example, to, to pave the entire area up and around the fire station adds a, just over a hundred and eighty thousand to the project. Uh, so, it's, it's nothing that, concrete costs money, and that, that's a, a part of the project where we might have to scale it back down or something like that. But would nice, it would be nice to be able to do everything in the project at the same time, but again, it adds expense, and we'll have to look at that closely, uh, when we weigh things out as far as expenses and things like that. Alright, any other comments? Alright, council.
Have we reached out to any of the other, I'm thinking mainly Monroe, to see how they got their fire station done with what I feel like was a little fanfare. I, I'm just hard pressed to believe that they had four point two million into...
The roads on the city, so it doesn't cost as much. The roads on the city, their township, so the prices are different. They put this for seven hundred and fifty thousand.
'Cause it's well furnished. I mean, we've heard a lot of the expense goes into the finishing piece, the offices, all the, you know, it's necessary stuff.
They do a chili supper every five years and make ten grand.
Say that again?
They do a chili supper every five years and make ten thousand dollars.
Do you know the, do you know the expense of what they're doing up in Center Point? I know it's in the millions for the one they're building.
I heard it was over two.
I, I, I heard like two, two point five or something like that, so...
And you could bid you out and I didn't want you.
I believe they're estimating half their cost for fundraising. It's over a million.
Can I make sure?
Yeah, we, we need to figure out fundraising. Uh, this whole town, I grew up in, was just four hundred people. It's building a million dollar building, and it's paid for, fundraising. And it's a bigger facility, and they can do it, why can't we?
We can.
This town is horrible. People come out and fundraisers. Gonna give a reason, Steve. But you know, Alliant's helped us a fish fry at Legion. They used to go here years ago, in a little big town. They move over there, and they get ten times as many people over there.
Would you reach out to Center Point and you find out who they're utilizing for their fundraising? I don't know if that person has the same amount of time that we do. I can't, they, I, uh, I believe it's a, uh, I think it's a lady, and I think it's the one that does it for other, uh, political figures or whatever. I, I, her name escapes me. It could be totally off base, but I believe that is. And then also, can you, uh, generate a list of everyone in the township and city? So, if we're gonna do some type of mail notification or something, whoever had on the project, the need that we're seeking, I think that'd be a good start as well. Go ahead, the gentleman.
Did somebody say that they wanted to do a dump thing?
You're welcome to do that. Now that actually might generate some money.
Or dump this thing.
Yeah. With sharks.
To January.
Alright, any other comments on the fire station? Chief? No?
Okay.
Alright, uh, the Roosevelt Street culvert replacement.
Yep. Easy, simple answer for both. Jeremy called the other day and said he'll, his intention is to be here in the first full week in August and do a culvert first, then a sewer extension, and he's a victim of Mother Nature, just like the rest of us. He's still working on May work here in July, so he's coming as fast as he can.
That worst part on Roosevelt, oh, no. North side, is that gonna be addressed?
That's right, where we're tearing up the culvert, so that's why it's...
That's washed away.
That's why it's still that way. I need to get back out there and put a few more millions in it and break it smooth again.
It does help.
Yeah. For about five days. Yes, I need to get out there more.
Any other, uh, comments on that?
Totally.
Alright, uh, that brings us to B triple I, uh, Naylor Cemetery Sewer Extension.
Same answer as the last one. It'll be, or do that one right after the culvert, so...
Alright, that completes the items on the agenda before I close. Uh, I just have a few items here that were placed. Also, an update on maybe the Wellmark or Wal- Wellmark or the Agenter stuff. Do you want any comments on these? Uh, they were just...
They're for you.
They're for me. Alright, very good. Alright, then, uh, given that, I will seek a motion to, uh, adjourned.
Moved by Menzen.
Second.
Seconded by Sarisson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for attending.
Thank you.